Okay, welcome everybody to our October seventh meeting. I would like to call this meeting in order and let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the recovery of our wishes, sands, one nation under God, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shannon, here. Councilmember Beckaschuk.
Present.
Councilmember Torren.
Here.
Vice Mayor Allen is not in today, uh Mayor Craig.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much. Would anybody like to make any changes to the orders of the day? Seeing none, we are going to go into announcements. Anybody have any announcements that they would like to make? Yes, I I just had one quick announcement, and that is the Santa Clara County Library has now become a participant in the Dolly Parton Imagine Imaginarian Library. So basically what that means is you don't even have to have a Santa Clara County library card, but students up to the first grade and sign up for the program that they will email the book from the organization, not hand signed by Dolly unfortunately, but they'll get a children's book every couple of months and they'll be able to read and they're all for free, so. If you're out there in listening land and want to participate, check out the Santa Clara County website. Okay, so let's start with our presentations. We have two presentations, by the same folks, the Santa Clara County Fire Department, so welcome and thank you for coming in. Fire, always one of our favorite subjects to talk about.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, how's everybody this evening?
Great.
To see everybody again, we're here for our six month report. And we're happy to be here. We we just have one presentation, but we'll bring up Deputy Fire Chief class to to answer or just to present a couple of things on our on our fire district right as we wrap up. So I'm Dennis Lally, I'm an Assistant Chief with the Santa Clara County Fire Department, and I also serve as the liaison for the city of Montesereno. And then once we get our presentation up, then we will, we will head right into it.
Sorry, it's thinking very slowly.
Technology, it's only Tuesday and the computers take until Wednesday.
Yes. Anna? You try pulling up and I can share your screen because mine is kind of frozen.
Yes.
So you have two options. You need to go online, I was gonna ask if that was key behind. Um, oh, we have to return.
But I can do it for more kids.
But it's not that it's.
It's not work.
Yeah, that's okay, it's just a register.
So you can just do it this way?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why it's not. I think so, it's gonna be able to access it now.
This is where you say get him back.
Just slows us from where you're at home.
Yes.
And it can kind of show.
Thinking too slow.
So we nearly were on the issue. The flag leaves San Jose.
Are we talking about today, sir?
Or today?
Or? I haven't signed, so I haven't.
Same thing. You're.
Can you do a Bill Fett? I can, that's that's the part I wanted to be careful about.
I was on a six thirty AM flight a week and a half ago out of San Jose, so the American plane leaves the gate.
I don't see where I can share.
At six AM. So to get there, I left and it took me from when I left her driveway to when I walked through security. And four, what, we're adding up to the interview, it was, yeah, somewhere around. It was thirteen minutes. I hit every single green light on the way. And that that's to get behind security from my driveway to behind security in thirteen minutes.
Were you in a hurry? Like, were you rushing to get to your?
I was, yeah, and but I was cruising along and, you know. Bad jamming ups. Yeah.
These flights are good, no traffic.
Yeah, there was no straps.
That's nice.
But tomorrow, I think. That that's that hour, yeah, ten out grades.
Well, yes, and keep it running.
What time do you get to the airport? Do you normally get there an hour early, hour and a half? Once your panelists may be the chance, if it's your international, but oh, wait, you are you doing the OJ Simpson thing?
What?
You don't know OJ Simpson?
Bringing in progress.
They have that Canada or OJ Simpson's.
Oh, running over and running over people and running over luggage. Yeah, I did.
So you can make sure that you run through the airport and like try to capture the last, so you can pummel it.
Yeah, well, I have time, so, so I'm. I believe, believe they called away even if it's on.
Yeah, but now you're trying to turn on the community.
So I was on last on board. During sports.
My my deference to you is DFW years ago. My, I mean.
Said you do the pedophiles.
Your panelists, you're welcome to share your screen.
Yeah. This tool is specifically. Extension.
I have it on my.
Me too.
I'm already.
Flight is yours.
I was gonna say, it's like mine.
Yeah. Screen mirror from here.
Uh, this door once they have these um airplane, so you should.
Total fire. Do you wear a watch? I just got one as a gift. And I do not know, I mean, I could do a few basic things, you know, like find my phone, I love that one.
That's the best way.
Um, but I'm trying to learn it.
For what anyhow?
Probably the common questions, it's maybe. Anybody I know, they're asking questions.
It's, you know, it's a really.
Ready.
See, it's gonna shake. I really got saved you.
It's a little slower, so it'll catch up to everything you've done previously.
Oh, perfect.
Does yours have the?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, of course, I need my phone to be by.
Yeah.
Think we're set to go, okay? All right, so again, we're prepared for our six month report. It's Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty five, and again, I'm Dennis Lally from the Santa Clara County Fire Department. To start with, we've had a lot of change. It's been a very busy six months for us. We've we've brought in multiple firefighters somewhere in the range of about twenty between either graduating a fire academy or currently in a fire academy that are helping to fill the the ranks of the firefighters for the positions that we have open. In the last six months, we went through a fire district reorganization, so as a result, we we needed more staffing to to fill those positions, so we're very happy to to be at that place. So we we have a lot of brand new people that are that are on probation as a result. Let's see if I can get this to show. All right, so we're gonna start with as always, wildfire awareness is is a thing for this city, it's a thing for the fire department, it's what we exist for, and so we'd like to start with a presentation or a video presentation for ready, set, go, and then we'll have a few others that really speak to some of the, some of that. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Were you at Supervisor Margaret Abicoba's wildfire summit in Palo Alto?
I was not.
You're not, because I spoke with the chief there.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, but you were, there there were a lot of firefighters there.
Correct, yeah, I I was I was not there for that presentation. So I'll start sharing with the video, so hopefully it'll play. We we have a few, one being ready, set, go, talking about awareness, the other talking about Zone Zero, which is a state regulation that that's going to be taking effect soon, as well as some of our communication methods that we use to alert the public. Okay? Not a bot, don't you dare.
We always encounter a bit of an issue with videos that are included in the PowerPoints, although I don't know if we'll be able to hear it, I'm still trying to access my end so that I could pull it up.
Okay, well, we know how to work. Through that, we'll just, we'll just go to it. All right, if you just give me a moment to pull it up, then we'll watch it, hopefully if it allows us straight from our YouTube site. Do that. Apologies.
I already thought you said stuff.
I was just. For all the public out there, technology is winning tonight, but we really would like to show you some of our videos that we think are very applicable to to the area. It's our first video.
Within California and beyond the actual state borders, all the way through most of the United States, we're seeing an increased wildfire risk. So it is not just a California phenomenon. Ultimately, when things are beyond our capability or capacity within local government and the state resources, this is sometimes where we have to just move people and get them out of the way.
Public safety officials will use all available communication methods to communicate the best evacuation plan for you, given the location of the emergency. We strongly urge you to sign up for Alert SCC. This is a communications program that allows the fire department to relay critical information to you, and it could be evacuation or an evacuation warning is coming. We're not necessarily going to be coming and knocking on your door. You need to be signed up to receive emergency evacuation alerts and notifications. An evacuation warning means fire is coming, it's time to get ready, you don't have to leave yet, but you might need to leave soon. It's good to plan ahead and have an idea of where you're going to evacuate before the emergency gets there. Included in your evacuation plan should be a bag of essentials that you're going to need for you and your family to be away from home for a period of time. It may be several days, it may be several weeks, it might just be a few hours, but have the bag ready, have medicines, have a change of clothes, and also have more than one way out of your neighborhood. But don't be surprised if the route that you planned is not going to be the best one to take during the time of the emergency. A shelter in place order means it's time to go inside, close your windows and doors, and wait for further instruction. Preparing for an evacuation order is important because it allows you time to think clearly and plan ahead before the emergency actually gets there. We might have you go to a temporary evacuation center until we can get a more appropriate one set up, so be prepared on going to multiple locations. What we'd like to see for you during evacuation order is to leave promptly. We don't want to see you stopped on the side of the road, taking pictures, or watching the responding fire engines. This can delay or impede our ability to get to the emergency quicker. One of our post evacuation priorities is to provide you with the critical information that you need to get to an evacuation center so that you can have the services you need for you and your family.
Community education is important to our mission because we want to empower our citizens to know what to do before an emergency, and then more importantly, what to do when there is an emergency. If they've got someone who has mobility problems that lives next door, that they can help them get out in a timely fashion, get themselves out in a timely fashion, which allows us to go right into the scene and go to work and not have to worry about life safety. To find more information and to sign up for classes, visit SCCFD.org.
All right, so.
So the topic about.
Oh, we've got. We made it through that video, but we're gonna try a better approach. So we have that aspect. And then we have. So if we can play. So I'm not sure, is this screaming if I just hit play?
Um, that one won't be available for the public, only this one, yeah, because we haven't logged into the.
Okay. Then we'll we'll do our best. Would that be okay?
Sure, let me just.
While we work out the tech, we'll we'll continue with the presentation.
So we could just stop sharing, we could share this screen, because it won't be able to share two screens at the same time.
Okay, perfect.
So then we can just.
Sharing sound.
Then I'm sorry, which ones that you need?
Share sound on the right corner. I'm sorry, you click it one more time under your share settings, if you stop share. And then we'll hit the share again. And then you'll select your your screen, but also click those two boxes. Perfect. Perfect, okay. So our next video that we're gonna share is for. Yes, please.
Wildfire risk is a threat to everybody. It's not just the fire department and it's not just the homeowner, we really need to come together.
That can be as simple as ensuring that your space, whether you have a five foot yard or a two foot yard or a fifty foot yard, is cleaned up.
How about this, what we go ahead and we'll just.
From surface fuels or vegetation litter along the ground.
When people think of wildfires, they think of a flaming fire coming right up to the structure, but really, a lot of the wildfire devastation.
No, it's okay.
I think we played outcast, yeah.
They have, they have definitely had some challenges, so I will go back to sharing my screen. And we'll just talk a little bit about what some of the things that we were gonna show in video. And going back to the ready, set, go, one of the things that Captain Kirk was was saying was to really have have your go bag together. And and we can't read it enough to to you or your public, your community, that that having personal preparedness is is key as they prepare for any type of disaster. The next thing we talked about was defensible space. That was a video that we were showing right there. There, they talked about Zone Zero and what that means, zero to five feet from your home, clearing out any flammable vegetation, the fact that Zone Zero also means your whole home. So any and everything in there, the the mesh screening, removing flammables, and then it moved out the ten to thirty feet, et cetera, for all your flammable vegetation and how to lima or to or to cut back your vegetation as you moved away from your home. The last thing that we were gonna show was a video that that dealt with alerting, I remember the last time we were here, we talked about alerting the community, and so it was just gonna give an overview of Genesis Protect and the alerting systems that are available there as a, just again, an awareness level, we use Genesis Protect, it's, we have mapped out the evacuation routes for the city of Montesereno. If we were to have an incident that required an evacuation, we would work with Los Catos, Montesereno PD in the evacuation, and we would identify those those zones that were to be evacuated or to be warned. We would do that in concert with our county office of emergency management, and we would do a learning through Alert SCC, which is the official learning method of the county. As things would would progress, then we have other options available on top of Alert SCC, which would be the wireless electronic device alerting that would draw geofence and alert mobile devices in the area. Genesis Protect or Genesis Alert, they do have an app, so that really is community driven. As your community members sign up and enter their information and choose their zone, they can choose the alerting for those zones so that if they have any notifications, they'll get those also on their local device. So those were the presentations we were gonna share, but we'll get right into the statistics at this point. So looking back, your twenty four, twenty five fiscal year, I'm sorry, we can't build this up any further, but your your call volume is right on track for Kito Fire Station. This time last year, you had just under a hundred and forty emergency incidents. This time this year, you're tracking at a hundred and twenty five. Just over fifty percent of your call volume is for medical incidents, another quarter of that is for non emergent service calls. And so besides the the off chance that that one of the citizens gets ill, most of your calls tend to be low acuity in nature, so that means your community is doing very well in making sure that they care for their own personal safety, and and that's been a consistent as we look through the statistics for your your town. About a year ago, you asked a question about station reliability, and so in this report, it shows that for for most of your calls for the past year, most of your calls are run by Engine Seventy Eight, especially on the southeastern section of town, so just seventy eight being the Kito Fire Station. The other portion is mostly running by our truck, and you find out out of the Winchester Station, that accounts for your Dave's Quarter on the northern end of of the district, if you had a question too.
Yes, Kito and and the Winchester Station, they provide services to both Montesereno and Los Catos. Kino, do they provide Saratoga or the unincorporated county? Los Catos and Montesereno?
Yes.
So what do those, what do our numbers look like relative to the other jurisdictions?
Your numbers are far less.
On a proportionate basis?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
You have a much lower call volume proportionate to Los Catos, proportionate to Saratoga, and what I can comfortably say in magnitudes. So they're running in the over a thousand per year, and Montesereno's were like just over four hundred gigabyte. Also considering that they also have more fire stations in in their area, so in the city of Saratoga, you have two fire stations and three fire companies. In the town of Los Catos, you have three fire stations and four fire companies. And so there's, there's just, it's proportionately larger based on their community and based on the the increased risk as a result. But for Kito Fire Station, they're performing well within our established benchmark goals. They're getting out the door within about ninety seconds, our benchmark's about two minutes. It's currently two minutes, so they're they're beating our benchmark, they're getting to their most of ninety percent of their emergency responses in about six and a half minutes. Our benchmark for those calls is about seven minutes and forty seconds. So they're doing very well for the call volume for the town. And then this is just a graphic representation of where most of your calls are, as you can see, they're they're spread around the town. Most everything on this end of of the Highway Nine, the south end of Montesereno is your your medical incidents and your service responses. Most of your incidents on the upper portion are also medical in nature, you'll notice some reds in there, the reds generally indicate a fire response, it does not mean that you had an actual fire. That in this mapping system means that you may have had a fire alarm. And the fire alarms for you actually take up a higher percentage of your call volume. So besides the service calls, get a lot of fire alarms here in Montesereno, fortunately, most of the time they turn out to be not fires. So overall, your community is is behaving in a manner that that reflects the efforts that the council is putting forward to have a safe community, and so we're we're happy to report that out. Wildland Urban Interface inspections, we know that's always a hot topic. We have four hundred and forty five parcels here in Montesereno that require inspection. We have seventy initial inspections assigned to engine companies, and in those seventy, only one noncompliant property was identified, so again, the community is doing well in that regard, when it comes to taking personal responsibility for for wildfire mitigation, sir.
So just explain a little bit more about what that is. And how many parcels did you say?
Four hundred and forty five require an inspection.
And what triggers the requirement for an inspection?
That I can't give you right off the top of the head, usually it it has to do with the Wildland Urban Interface for like, we've updated the the LRA maps and the the fire hydrors are fire hazard severity zones. And so that is usually a trigger for what constitutes needing a Wildland Urban Interface inspection.
So, okay, so it's an algorithm that you have that says here's the parcels that you need to look at, and then you go and you look at them and you see if they comply for.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I add on to that question? So there was four hundred and forty five parcels last time you did inspections, but now that we have the new fire maps and we have much less of Montesereno in the high fire severity zones, does that number, are you expecting that number to go down from four forty five to something much less?
It's possible, but we're not expecting much of a change. And that's the last that we talked to our fire marshal, I can give back to you with that if you'd like.
I was just curious.
Okay. Again, there's only a few places that really saw significant change when it came to those those maps that will actually see an increase. One of those areas is is west of here in the hills of Cupertino. But for the most part, no real change for Montesereno. For hydrant inspections, we had questions about fire hydrants last time we were here. We inspect the fire hydrants annually. This past year, a hundred and eighty eight inspections were assigned to the Kito Fire Station, and a hundred and fifty five have been completed, and will complete what's left by the end of the calendar year. We had a question from from one of your community members outside, and we were just talking about the the process of how the hydrants, when they're out of service, what happens? What will happen in our case is either our engine company will, in a matter of their inspection, they will see that there is something that is broken. Perhaps there's a main issue, they will report that to our fire prevention. Um, as part of their inspection process, uh when they log it, fire prevention is able to watch that uh in live time. And so as uh they have uh hydrants that need to be repaired, uh it is uh assigned to uh our uh. Prevention staff where they deals with the water purveyors. They get that report and then they one-on-one with uh the water purveyors. Usually there's max two to three week turnaround for repair. Uh, but it's a rapid repair and then they uh update the system to show that it's been repaired and back in service. And so it's usually a short period of time. The other way that we find out is if uh if it's in between inspection cycles and the public notices a problem and they report it to us. We again go through that same process of notifying fire prevention. They get with whoever owns the hydrant, the hydrant is repaired. Water purveyor falls up and and then we update our our records. So i- it's very rare that a hydrant remains out of service for uh longer than a few weeks. Uh, there are three state mandated fire inspections that were assigned to the the Montesereno or to the Kito Fire Station. Uh, and they have completed all of those and will complete uh the same in twenty-five. Some overall department um accomplishments between uh this time last year to now. Uh, we've we've talked about our pre-fire management, law, our resilience program. Uh, we've grown that uh uh part of that is our our uh fire fuels crew. We've grown that from eight to twelve positions, and so uh we're still uh working in collaboration with the cities. Uh, with county parks uh and and whomever else we can work with to help with the mitigation efforts locally. Uh, some of the larger projects they they've done have been locally here at San Juan Park, San Juan Park, as well as up in uh Camp Stewart. They've done six community risk assessments uh that were requested uh for uh communities seeking fire rise accreditation. Uh, and um, we we always recommend that to the communities to uh become firewise communities. Uh, we've uh secured funding for our twenty-five, twenty-six uh shipping program, and so we know the residents here take uh take a part in that as well. Uh, and so we're excited to see the the community uh rally around that. Uh, and and as you know, our community wildfire protection plan was completed. Uh, while back and and continues to serve as an overall planning document uh for the area. For community education, uh for the past fiscal year, we have four programs here specific to the area. Uh, we reached about forty community members. Um, and uh, right now, going on right now today. Uh, there's a cert academy happening uh in Cupertino, and so. Uh, the citizens of Montesereno are free to to sign up and and go wherever they would like to in the area. Uh, if they'd like to join cert and and uh uh assist in their community. Uh, we have a a CPR class coming up on November fifth. Uh, we have a preparing for medical emergencies class on November thirteen, uh thirteenth. And emergency preparedness uh in the workplace course on December tenth, and that's a virtual course. So we're always excited to have a community involvement uh with our citizens here, our community here in Montesereno. I think last time we were here, we were still awaiting uh uh some new fire apparatus, and so. Uh, we talked about it for about a year and uh we received finally our Rescue Seventy-Three over at Saratoga. Uh, our our rescue apparatus carry more rescue equipment for the area, so they're they are your your first new. Uh, technical rescue resource for the western portion of Montesereno. Uh, the Winchester Fire Station coverage of northern for any technical rescue uh needs they may have. Uh, we're really happy to have this apparatus. Um, as it stands right now, supply supply chain issues. Uh, throughout the industry, uh when you order a fire engine, it's often taking up to four years for it to be delivered. From the time that you order to the time that you see it. Um, and so um getting out ahead of that uh is really uh, you know. I- it's a logistical um real strong planning process that has to happen. Uh, and and a significant budget process that has to happen because uh the the cost of the fire engine is everything that's gone up as well. And so um we're really excited when we receive new apparatus uh and when we're able to replace them on our 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 plan. We mentioned district reorganization, uh we uh. As a result of the reorganization, we absorbed the service area of the South Santa Clara County Fire District. So uh, think about all of the unincorporated area uh around Coyote Valley. Uh, that surrounds Morgan Hill, that surrounds Gilroy, everything up to the summit. Uh, west to the Santa Cruz County line and everything east to uh the Merced County line. Merced, um, and then uh south to San Antonio County. So so we've we've gained about two hundred and ninety-two square miles. Part of that, though, uh we were able to acquire apparatus uh to support that move, so we have a new water tender. Which is similar to the water tender here at Kito Station, uh we have one down there in uh the south area. Uh, down off of one-on-one, uh as well as a new engine on order uh for another one of the stations down there. Uh, so we're very excited to to be able to receive those actually quicker than the four-year process. Um, so very excited. Uh, we have another ladder truck coming to Los Altos, Altos Hills. And uh another water tender coming to the Los Altos area. And and the reason why we bring this up is uh not not just for awareness, but the fact that. If it's a large incident, it is very likely that you're gonna receive support, at least in the north end, from some of these apparatus from farther away. So take, for instance, if it's a larger fire uh here in the flats in Montesereno. You will have a ladder truck from uh right there at Winchester Fire Station, but you will also get a ladder truck from Cupertino. And so that's how we're able to share resources uh as the fire district. Moving to the next slide, uh we'll talk a little bit about our facilities. Uh, again, we mentioned our expansion, and so uh. We picked up four new fire stations as a result of that expansion. Um, they are located on the edge of uh Gilroy, uh Morgan Hill, uh and the county proper. And so um, as we uh now get our feet set, then all of the capital improvement projects that result from. Uh, facility assessment and the maintenance that needs to happen uh gets added to the list. Uh, just like what we're doing here uh at the Kito Fire Station. Uh, the Kito Fire Station just had a roof replacement and a full HVAC replacement. Um, and so uh it's in line for for further remodeling in the very near future, and so uh glad to maintain the service there. Uh, we've also uh. Repurposed to the best of our ability, our former headquarters there on Winchester and Mark. Uh, we now use that as a secondary training facility. And so uh on any given day during the week, you may see a fire academy. Or you may see our engineers training there, right there uh at our headquarters, and we use every square inch possible for that. So i- it's been really exciting uh and and quickly moving this this last six months for all of us. Again, I mentioned Kito Station, uh they had the HVAC replaced uh and a new roof installation. I think that's happening this week. Um, and then we're really looking at what we can do for a large-scale remodel of the station. And so uh the happenings of the last six months have caused to have us to have to rearrange some scheduling for that, but. In the near future, there'll be a lot of construction there at the Kito Station. And coming down to the end, um, our our goals for the rest of the year and in it's in the twenty-six, um, uh we. We really worked to have strong relationships with our cities, uh our towns, our incorporated areas. Um, and and that's a huge goal uh for us to continue to do. Uh, we continue to want to uh to develop and provide. High-quality uh community education uh based on the risks that we find. Uh, we are in the. End portion of a five-year assessment where we really look at our organization, our fire district. And we see the places where we have strengths, where we have weaknesses. Uh, and and where we can make those improvements, and that's part of our continuous quality improvement program. Uh, again, that is a a five-year uh process where every year we're doing program appraisals, but then at the end of that five years. We do a full look back at the last five years, we analyze the data. And then we have an outside peer team come in and assess our organization to see if we're really trying to to live what we say we are. Uh, not a single person comes from with it from within this state. And so they really are, when I say disconnected, they are impartial peer assessors. For our organization, and so we're looking at going through that in November uh as we wrap the process now. Um, and we're gonna continue to look for uh. Property to accommodate not only training needs but operational needs, and so. Uh, we have a very busy next few years ahead of us as an organization, uh which includes the Kito Fire Station. Now, one of the things I mentioned uh was strengthening our city and town partnerships for a safer community. Um, one of the items that that we wanted to take a moment to speak about with you. Uh, is is what it means to to be within the Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District. Uh, to do so, I'd like to invite up uh Deputy Fire Chief Brian Glass, and then he'll cooffer those comments for me.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Brian Glass. I'm the Deputy Fire Chief for the Santa Clara County Fire Department. I oversee operations. Support services, which is our clean facility and our information and technology. Uh, Chief, Chief Lawley covered a lot of ground tonight, and we had some challenges with the technology, so I apologize for that. Just want to say that all of these videos are available on our YouTube channel and our department website. It's W W W dot YouTube dot com forward slash S E C F D. Um, so again, if you want to go back and take a look at that information, please feel free. So um the Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District was formed in nineteen forty-seven. Two uh basically rural fire districts came together and said, we need to have fire protection. At the time, the state of California recognized that the valley was growing and kind of pulled back from the valley floor, and there needed to be fire protection. Um, one, the city incorporated, it came over as part of the Alma Fire District in the seventies. And uh became part of our fire district. The nice part about being part of a fire district and Chief Lawley kind of covered it by talking about Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, Cupertino. How the responses are coming from all over is that no one fire station is fully capable of handling every emergency. To be honest, no one fire department is really capable of handling that emergency. So if you have a structure fire in the city of Montesereno, you get a resource from Saratoga and Los Catos and Campbell and possibly Cupertino. Again, this is the strength of being part of an agency that has nineteen fire stations. And we look at the apparatus that we're replacing. Typically, we shoot for a ten-year replacement cycle, so the vehicle that's at Kito. Uh, Engine Seventy-Eight was replaced in twenty nineteen. And so we begin to budget and we begin to look at that because it does take the reaction time, up to four years in some cases for apparatus to be built. And delivered. Uh, the water tender that's there. You know, I had the pleasure of working on both the apparatus committee for that engine and that uh water tender back when those were being built. Uh, I was able to travel back east and and watch those through construction. I also served as a firefighter back in two thousand and four for almost a year and a half at at Kito Station, so. Uh, we're looking at investing in that property. Uh, there's been plans for it to be rebuilt. It is a very small lot. It's very challenging to build on. So again, like any city, the the district operates much like a city. Um, so we have to be smart with our fiscal uh revenues. And making sure that we're investing that back to the community and taking care of the taxpayers. So at the end of the day, we've done a significant remodel. Um, it's planned right now. Uh, we've done a uh new uh kitchen floors, new uh flooring throughout, new H V A C system. And a brand-new roof to make sure that we're taking care of that facility. The bones of that facility, it's one of our original fire stations built in nineteen forty-seven. Uh, it's very robust, but. We are starting to outgrow it. Size of apparatus is continuing to increase, and we need to make sure that our firefighters have. Uh, gender-neutral dorm facilities, bathroom facilities, and that we're really taking care of of the firefighters so that they can take care of the community. So being part of the fire district really gives uh communities like yours the ability to leverage economies of scale. Again, you don't need your own fire chief, you don't need your own command staff, you don't need your own fire prevention, you're much, you're part of the much bigger picture. And again, we still have the ability to to meet with constituents and talk them through what an evacuation route planning might look like. What the Genesis tools Chief Lawley talked about is. Uh, we have very strong partnerships with Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office. And we also have a very strong partnership with Chief Fields and her team at the Los Catos, Montesereno P D. So again, uh, as we talk about things like evacuation routes, alert and warning notification systems that are out there. Just want to make sure that you know your Santa Clara County Fire Department is focused here locally in Montesereno. We understand the community. We're part of the community, so if there are questions that I can ask specifically, if there's things that we want to go back on, uh, we're happy to follow up. Uh, you nailed it, Councilmember. Uh, while and urban interface inspections are driven off of. Uh, fire severity hazard zones and the new L R A maps that were adopted, so if you're in low, medium, or high. That's how we identify those four hundred and fifty parcels. Our engine companies are out there. Uh, inspecting those properties and we're looking for things like uh violations in. Uh, overgrown material, lack of an address, and again, it's not out there to penalize people, it's really out there to educate. Connect with the community, help them make their homes uh stronger. Uh, you saw the video, it kind of was a little choppy, but really we all have a responsibility from the fire department to city councils, to regular residents. And constituents that live in the community to make sure that their home is ready for fire. So with that, I'm happy to take any other questions that the council may have. Again, if there's follow-up questions, I'm happy to leave a business card. Both Chief Lawley and myself can be made available to answer questions. You know, if they come to you later or constituents approach you about it, we would love to have that opportunity to sit down and educate them.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we have a couple of questions.
So first of all, thanks for your service. Um, I'm very familiar with it. I was the CEO of Red Cross in Silicon Valley for eight years. Previously, um, so I'm very familiar with uh with your operations and all you do to go safe and prepared. But speaking of Red Cross, which by the way, had the first office of Red Cross, um. Was in the city of Montesereno, do you guys know that?
Right here.
Right here, right.
Next up, next.
Or next door or somewhere around here. Um. I noticed that you work with cert, which is great, and also um the Heart Association, that's great. I just wondered, is, you know, what connection you have or should have with the Red Cross, which does a lot of overlap types of services. In the community too, but I think it's a, it would be valuable to have that collaboration as well.
Yeah, and um uh, thank you for your service. Uh, it's uh great to work for the Red Cross and give back. Um, so we utilize the Red Cross anytime we have a significant structure fire or displaced residents, so. Uh, you know, if we end up in a situation where a fire uh extends beyond the incipient or beginning phases and. The home is deemed not livable or red-tagged by the building official. Then what we do is we reach out to the Red Cross to make sure that those services, those wraparound services to support our community members. We do that in all the communities we serve, so if that were to happen here in Montesereno. You can be assured that our communication center has the Red Cross on a speed dial number. Make sure that they're activated early uh and brought to the scene to connect those impacted residents, and we stay with them. Uh, we also have the ability to issue out what we call, it's a save card, it's a small. Um, uh debit card, if you will, we activate that on the spot over the phone. All of our battalion chief and incident commanders have that uh ability, and we can hand that to a displaced resident, and the values. Uh, uh vary based on the number of people impacted and and for how long they're gonna be impacted, but uh. I really appreciate the question and thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, for for response, I just uh for response, I completely understand. That's great. I was thinking we're from a preparedness perspective because you have your. We call, used to call it Red Cross ready, it's very similar. I just wondered if there was any way to collaborate or do some cross-training or or something along those lines.
You know, I don't uh oversee the community education risk response division, and that might be a topic. I can assure you that we have connections at the Red Cross, but uh we'll take that back and put that in.
I'd be glad to make that connection for you as well.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Shannon or.
I have a question about evacuation because we've talked about it a lot here at council, and I'm I'm just wondering from staff also. Is there communication back and forth with Santa Clara County Fire? I know there have been some discussion about maybe doing a study on evacuation routes. Uh, do we have everything that we need from Santa Clara County Fire?
Yes, so from the city's um. Efforts with the current um safety element that is under review, the council um and the site architectural commission have seen it. Um, once and provided feedback. Um, that will be coming back to the city council um at the first meeting of December for a consideration of final approval. And that does include state mandated requirements for evacuation map identification. Maintenance planning within those policies. Um, we have also worked um with the fire department on um. Providing information to our residents about the various uh notifications, the Genesis. Um, app and and different um. Opportunities where residents can receive the uh notifications of incidents that may be occurring as put out by the fire department.
Okay, so so we then addressed the evacuation routes question.
As mandated by the state, will be addressed in the safety element. Um. During an incident, the the fire department and the police department will determine. Specific routes during any incident that that are available to residents depending on where. An incident or a fire may be occurring at that moment.
Okay.
And I'm happy to expand on the emergen-
And I'm happy to expand on the emergency side if you'd like. Obviously, the city manager's clearly articulated the state mandated component and we're happy to support the safety element of the general plan of the city. We do that for all of the communities that we serve. Um, now, when we are at the scene of an incident, actually just did a demonstration a few moments ago on the computer. We have the ability to model uh wildfire behavior uh in a simulation using real time weather. Uh, we can also drive uh the weather and put in predictive manners. Uh, one thing when you have a wildfire, it's really hard to pre-script uh evacuation pathways because we don't know on the day which way the wind will be blowing. And as we know, wind can be a major factor in uh direction of the fire movement spotting. Um, so we may need to have the state mandated routes identified, but we will give direction to the community in near real time using the Alert S C C platform, which was in the video. And again, we can find that just a simple Google search, Alert S C C pop right up, put in your phone, your email, and you can receive texts. And then we highly encourage people to download the Genesis app. And the application will send push notifications and if you give it the ability to see your location, it will know that you are in one of those impacted or affected zones when we do a protective action order in conjunction in unified command the law enforcement agency that has jurisdiction, whether that's the sheriff's office or the police department in Los Gatos, Monte Sereno. Again, the fire department is typically the one that's giving the subject matter expertise on the wildfire movement and helping to the to develop the evacuation boundary, shelter in place, evacuation worrying, evacuation order, the three levels. And then we use the law enforcement agency having jurisdictions authority to activate it, if you will. And then the Office of Emergency Management actually controls those platforms. The Alert S C C platform, which is really ever bridge. So again, it's a three way partnership between law enforcement, fire and Office of Emergency Management. And again, uh, the safety element helps us identify the core evacuation routes. And on the day of the emergency, we will identify the artillery, arterials and the feeders that we want to uh evacuate and notify.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. It's a great question. All right.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, well, thanks so much for all that you do for us and for coming in tonight and giving us your presentation. And we'll look forward to seeing you in six months.
Thank you all.
Hopefully six months. Hopefully, we'd love to see you sooner. All right, great. So at this time, it's oral communications and I would like to invite anybody who would like to discuss any matter that is not on the agenda tonight, come forward and speak. And uh, is there anybody in the audience who would like to say something? Liz, come on up.
Good evening, council. I just, first of all, I just wanted to say congratulations to Councilmember Torn, producer of my tips. I'm thrilled. And then I also wanted to bring up the fact that S B seventy nine is sitting on Newsom's desk. And there is a huge movement to ask for it to be vetoed, including uh current mayor here in basketball San Jesus asked for it to be vetoed and several other assembly members and representatives from down south. And so if he doesn't veto it and he lets it sit on his desk, it automatically becomes law. So I encourage uh council to consider sending a letter this week because the deadline's October twelve for him to sign it or veto it. Um, letting them know that we also would ask him respectfully to veto this bill because it obviously uh will hinder evacuation scenarios in the event of wildfire when you have increased density along transit corridors like ours. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, which which one is S B?
S B seven nine. So, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks very much. Anybody else? Is there anybody online with their hand raised?
No hands are raised.
Very good. So I will close oral communications. Are there any communications that we should be aware of? Okay, then I take it to the consent calendar and that will be items three, four, five and six. Is there any member of the public wishing to pull an item? Any member of council wishing to pull an item?
Uh, yes, okay, I'll pull item four. Item number four.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up the public for anybody would like to speak on any of the items. Seeing nobody on chamber, anybody online?
No hands are raised.
Okay, very good. So can I have a motion to approve items three, five and six, please? So moved. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Great. And do we need a roll call on any of these? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that brings us to item number four. And that will be approve the warrant list dated September thirtieth. And do we have a motion to approve?
I wanted to comment.
Okay.
So this is the first warrant list that is being presented through the Tyler E R P Pro Ten uh software. And uh, everyone has worked very diligently on this and we got it across the finish line, but it's not perfect yet. And when you see the next one, it will be better. Um, but uh I have abstained from uh voting on uh the warrant list since January of twenty twenty four, I think, or maybe it was a year earlier. So I would be absolutely delighted to make motion.
Excellent.
Question?
Yes.
Hate to say this. What is this? Can somebody describe what this is?
Oh, the warrant list, the warrant list is a listing of the
Thank you.
The payments that we're going to make. And there's a statement that's on the warrant list uh that uh the city manager signs and usually the finance director, if we have that person as a position, they're also making a statement that first of all, all the payments are being made pursuant to actually receiving the goods and services and there's sufficient money to make those payments. And uh, different cities call it different things and we're kind of historic in calling it a warrant lesson. Traditional, I'm sorry.
No, I won't ask again.
Okay. Uh, any other comments? Well, I would just like to say thank you so much to councilmembers Megan Chuck and Shannon. Put a lot of work in it and thank you very much to staff. I know Diana and uh and who's our?
Crete.
Crete. I mean, you've been on many, many hours of training with with Tyler and uh as as Councilmember Megan Chuck mentioned, it's taken taken a lot of time and effort to make this happen. So we look forward to seeing the continual improvements. And um, and for Councilmember Megan Chuck to vote on future warrant lists.
So I'll make motion to approve the warrant list. Great.
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. All in favor? That was unanimous and that takes us on to item number seven, which is an update on the city council adopted goals to increase civic engagement and provide any direction to staff. And so we'll let Diana start out with the staff report for us.
Thank you. Um, the Montesereno City Council had conducted an annual goal goal setting session earlier this year and provided direction on the goals to be adopted for the current fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Uh, the adopted goals included a program to increase civic engagement and resident involvement in the community, including a possible partnership with Leadership Los Gatos. Uh, the Leadership Los Gatos portion of this goal was previously considered by council um on August fifth in order to meet the application timeframe for the twenty five, twenty six program. Um, applications for that were due uh at the end of August. And um I believe the the program had the first meeting last week and two Montesereno residents are participating um in the the current Leadership Los Gatos program based on um council's direction at the August meeting. So this item is to discuss and provide any direction to staff on other opportunities for improving civic engagement and building community within Montesereno. Um, the staff report does provide a little bit of information on a few ideas that have been um discussed um in the past and more recently by council members, community members, um as well as the Better Streets Commission. And those ideas include establishing a veterans memorial in Montesereno. Perhaps establishing a community or neighborhood bench program where um property owners would volunteer to place a bench in their front yard, likely near the street to allow for other community members to to use during walks and perhaps sit down and and start communications between neighbors. Another idea was to establish a birdhouse program. The quail is the city's um mascot, I guess you would call him. Um, so perhaps uh establishing birdhouses, encouraging birdhouses within the community and even um placing some birdhouses in the public right of way uh would would create a a sense of community. And then um another idea that has been brought up is improving the walkability through the city. Um, the city does not have sidewalks in most of the streets and many of the streets are dead end. Um, streets are not connected to other parts of the city. So um improving walkability through the community would be um another possibility to um in to build a community within Montesereno. So as I mentioned, this meeting is an opportunity for the council to discuss any of these items, um add any additional items and or direct staff how to um proceed with opportunities to address this goal. And that includes concludes the staff report. I'm happy to answer your questions right now.
All right, thank you very much. Questions for staff, Councilmember Torn?
So great programs, the veterans, the bench, the birdhouse, walk ability. How how is this, how are these things funded if they were to happen? And how, who, how how do we priori prioritize them?
So if we were, if council were to direct staff to um further look into any of these um opportunities or other ideas, then we would come back with some more information and details, including potential costs.
For each one?
Yeah.
Or, you know, some of these are, you know, could be funded by the community, you know, like benches and things of that nature.
Great.
Okay, and hopefully the youth commission is going to step up. We're actually talking with them about Greg making some birdhouses for us. So if anybody's got any scrap wood around, we can, we can use some, we'll put it to good use. And if anybody wants to come help us build birdhouses, when we do do it, bring your birdhouse building expertise. Okay, so any other questions for staff? Yes, Councilmember Megan Chuck.
Oh, I don't have a question for staff. Okay, I think this do you want comments?
Sure.
And input for staff. I think community involvement is important and uh, starting with the youth is is very important. And for the, for city council to to be part of the community as well, I think is important. So for example, um at the October fest, it was good to be out there in the community and in meeting people and speaking to people. Um, but I I also want to say that I think later on in the agenda, we may have an opportunity to start to involve uh more people in the community. Um, and anything that we can do to get new people involved in the community and and uh Councilmember Torn, I think it's fabulous that you are volunteering your time to to be on council. Um, because that's, that's new. And uh, I have not spoken with Bob yet, who's on site in architecture. The the setback. Anyways, um and how uh the Leadership Los Gatos program is going. And I also believe Allison Zeidler's uh going to that, which is fabulous. I mean, it's starting to build more community and to get them speaking positively about it would be, would be great. So um, those are just some of my thoughts.
Okay, very good.
Yes, one, sorry, question. Um, is it custom, this is a general question, is it customary to um share fina- financial reports? Like, so how do we know where we are from a financial perspective, budget versus actual? In in general, is that customary to be shared at these meetings or periodically?
It will be, yes. So with the implementation of the new financial software system, we are working on that and to be providing more frequent information to council on on this app.
Just so you know, because we're all kind of chuckling behind the scenes because it's been a, it's part of this project that we were just discussing that we have the warrant list. It's new with this new Tyler implementation and that's one of the big goals is to get really good timely financial information to the council. So your question is a very good question.
Yeah. Okay, and and then I would also just like to say that this is not an item that we just bring up and something that we check off every few months during the year. I know that there is constant work that's being done on this and and for example, um as we talked with Mike Frantidakis, when he was applying for the city council position, um he has, he and I have actually been in contact and I've actually put him in contact with the city manager about trying to move forward on getting the veterans memorial built and and hopefully something's going to to move there pretty soon. I've got it on my list to get back in touch with him because I haven't heard from him in a few weeks now. And um, and 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 some of these goals are just very long terms, for example, walkability. I mean, it's, it's, it's really a shame that if somebody's living in the Big Mill area that the only real way to get to downtown Los Gatos or or anywhere is you have to basically walk all the way down to to the to the Bay Club and then walk another two miles north just to get into downtown. And it'd be nice if one day we were able to get some kind of a cut through and and uh but of course, that means trying to get easements, trying to get people that would like to have this near their house and such and such. And but you know, maybe get a one or two more Wimber Wimberly weights type of uh back through through the city, I think would be a, would just really en- enhance the the um
Yeah, for sure.
The community of uh Montesereno.
Yes. Um, I forgot to say that on our street on Villa Sereno, one of our residents uh had moved out uh some time ago and a new couple moved in and they just had a baby and we're having a little block party.
Oh, that's pretty nice.
And it's kind of been a once a year thing, but that's going to happen and and I've been unable to attend, but this time I'll be there and I'll be talking about getting more involved and and I will solicit them for ideas on what to bring to council.
No, and and speaking of community, just would like to make sure everybody um marks their calendar for the first Saturday in December. That is when we will be participating in the Los Gatos holiday parade and we always have a a presence there. So you have been announcing these things for a few years.
Maybe you did.
One little moment of in fa- of fame, but that's about it. Maybe you can do a live broadcast from the uh, from the bus, hoping to have the bus come.
So are you the, one of the announcers? Are you the one like on the first part of it, up on the balcony?
No, I'm, I I do announcing for K C A. So we, we, we broadcast the parade. We've been doing that for many years. I'm not, I'm not up in the.
Oh, okay, so not, you're not broadcasting what those announcers are saying.
No, those are, those announcers announce what's coming down. We actually do a broadcast that's view for viewing on TV.
It goes out over channel fifteen. If you have, if you have Comcast.
And stream.
And then we stream it.
I'm usually at the parade, so.
I know.
It's fun.
Okay, so um, again, this is just an item for discussion. There's really no action item. And um at this point, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody wishing to add to this great discussion? Anybody online that would like to speak?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. So with this, I'll, I'll close the uh, you know, the public comment. And again, this is an ongoing item, so please reach out to um, just gonna have to put Diana on the spot, reach out to Diana or reach out to me and I'll forward anything on to Diana. Reach out to me and I'll forward anything on to Diana that I can come up with and um. Will continue to enhance the community and and enjoyment of living in Monte Sereno. Okay, so item number eight, consider and approve city council committee commission reassignments for. Calendar year twenty twenty five. And so this this item is really on on the agenda due to the resignation of council member Lahy. And he has a few committee and commission positions that he was on, and we would like to try to get those filled. With either our new incoming. Uh council member or to see if there's any council members who would like to. Uh try out a different committee for size, as we will be doing. A full reorganization in December as we reorganize the council, so it'll be up to the new mayor to make all of those. Do council, I mean, all those new committee and board uh appointments, but um. Diana, you have a staff report for us?
That was pretty much it.
So um what positions are we are open right now? Let's go back to the.
There's a nice little schedule that.
Yes, so in the staff report, it lists on there are three primary. Um committees that are all related to the Santa Clara County Cities Association. And then there are three alternate positions, one is for the Santa Clara County Library District. The Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority and Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority.
Okay, so I I have spoken with our new council member and he would be very interested in continuing. Um, Javi's position on Savakka as as an alternate. And uh. See, we had also talked about the Cities Association.
Yeah, which I know very little about, but it sounds interesting.
Yeah, the Cities Association is actually uh very good and and you'll notice that there's two positions there. Board of Directors and Legislative Action Committee, and the Legislative Action Committee. Will get a report generally.
County Cities.
Yeah, so generally from uh the city of San Jose, they use the the, since they have. The the resources to do this, they have a an entire department that's in charge of uh keeping an eye on the different um. Rules and regulations that are coming out of Sacramento primarily and and then they come and make a report and then. They, the Cities Association makes a recommendation on if they're going to support that particular item or not. And it generally happens before the Cities Association meeting, so. Some cities actually send two different delegates for this, but we've in the past have generally sent one, it just makes it easier.
That's for the board, not the Legislative Action Committee.
That's for both of them, they both meet on the same night, the Legislative Action Committee meets sometimes fifteen to thirty minutes.
It's the same.
Before the regular meeting, so and.
Do you have any idea when those meetings take place?
Those meetings are on a Thursday, they're the third Thursday of every month, evening, yeah, they start at seven o'clock.
Yes, I'll say that uh I was on the Santa Clara County Cities Association. And the conflict is with the um BTA Policy Advisory Committee. And it's like, I know I have to go from one to the other, but it's impossible.
We don't have that kind of transportation system in police right now too, so these are in Sunnyvale, by the way, it's at the Sunnyvale um City Hall.
And do you have any idea when the uh Savaka, Savaka?
Savaka, yeah, I I don't.
When those board meetings take place?
Um, they're every other month on the fourth Thursday.
Evening?
Um, I can. My computer's been having an issue, I can't access my emails, but um. I'd have to get back in terms of the timing.
So that would make conflict with the. City Association if it's in the evening. The thing, well, you know, when when was the the uh? City Association meeting on Thursday, is that?
It would be this Thursday, today is Tuesday, it would be this Thursday.
Like, literally.
Yeah, so so they call, it's the whatever, third Thursday of the month.
So let's see, the board meeting is.
Didn't the Javi have a like a executive? You know, level appointment or something for the Cities Association, or was it? Jesse was a member and everybody who comes from one of the cities is considered a member. Oh, he had a leadership role.
Hey, yes, I I think he did, but that that was his passion.
Yes.
The Cities Association.
Whoever is gonna take over Cities Association, did they step into his role or they they will nominate somebody new, yeah?
Just a memory.
The their meeting is um in the morning, eight thirty, eight thirty next Monday.
The the animal?
Yeah, eight thirty to ten thirty.
Excellent.
Of the days and times for our.
So that we we actually have.
Well, uh the mayor said that in December, these will all get reassigned and everything.
Yes.
So it just would be nice to know when we're looking at it.
We have that on our website where it shows um what day of the month they meet, how often, and uh that where you guys can all see.
Yeah, yeah, we'll pass out a a spreadsheet like we did the last time or like a table that has all the all of the different. In the need condition.
I just know when I started, I had put on a couple committees and there was conflict for the timing, and so that remember that created kind of a.
We had to work that one. You know, it just give an example for Savaka, they've actually only met three times this year. They met in January, March, and then in September, so it's not a not an every every month.
Okay, so I'll do the Cities Association and the as a primary and the Savaka as. An alternate.
Okay.
And I'd be interested in being the alternate for the um Library District.
Okay, that would be great. Really enjoy doing library and um council member Alan said he would like to be the alternate for. Uh Silicon Valley Clean Energy. So uh and yeah, go ahead, Brian.
We're trying to get some community involvement and I looked into uh the S V C E. Uh Silicon Valley Clean Energy and the. Board Chair George Tyson. He said, you know, if you want to involve someone from your community, you can get them to be an alternate, they can't be a primary person.
Uh, anyone?
Yeah, from your community could be there. Uh, and I met with the gentleman yesterday. Uh who reached out to me and said that he wanted to be more involved in the city of Monte Sereno. And I believe Mr. Terry McCarthy is here in the audience. And uh we could appoint him as an alternate now. Also leases my alternate on several uh boards, the the um. Clean, uh sorry, uh Solid Waste Management Authority in the Clean Water or Stormwater Authority now. And I think that, you know, your role as an alternate is a function of how much the. The primary person can attend, so I. I, those meetings for me are don't misses. Um, but I've got a problem with with the uh Silicon Valley Clean Energy tomorrow night. And they need to have a quorum in Santa Clara County. And because of this uh, the Cities Association Annual Conference is in Long Beach. There's gonna be a number of people that aren't gonna be able to attend in person in Santa Clara County, so they're they're. Very worried about their quorum and I thought that perhaps uh council member Toren could be there. But he advised me yesterday.
I have a conflict.
That he's got a conflict, I think it's similar to your conflict. Um, but if we wanted to in and uh I'm not sure if Juan can attend tomorrow. Here, but uh if we wanted to start to reach one of our goals, and this is what I was alluding to earlier. Perhaps we could consider uh of having um uh Mr. McCarthy be an alternate. And. Okay, maybe we can hear from him, I'm not sure, so I guess the first thing is that. If we were going to involve somebody from the community, we would have to post this as a position and we would have to accept applications. I'm not sure that you'd have to do that, and I think that that's actually, it's not like we get a lot of applications to be involved.
Yeah, but but I think we should at least post it, I mean. We we really, I think, should make it available to everybody. Cause this is kind of like, yeah, you happen to have know somebody who is interested and they express some interest to you about how to be more involved. But nobody else would would know about this type of opportunity, since they haven't spoken with you about it.
Right? I guess. I would like to see Silicon Valley Clean Energy have a quorum tomorrow. That's very important, and I'm wondering if we could not do both things, if we could uh perhaps appoint uh. Terry to be. An alternate, I'll be attending most meetings, but it's tomorrow is is unique in the. You know, I'm gonna be in Long Beach and that's the reason why also the Policy Advisory Committee. Can't meet because they can't get quorum in Santa Clara County.
Right.
And S V C is right on the cusp of that and.
You're gonna ask all the alternates, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
Social, well.
Do you? Did I I said that I couldn't attend the one for B T A?
Yeah, yeah, you had already told me.
Yeah. So, I mean, I I don't know.
I know, let me um. Turn that one over to Diana or our city attorney.
So I do know that um that an alternate can be a resident, but I don't know that we. Properly notice it on the agenda, that the idea of appointing a non-council member. For this item, so I am I'm concerned about that, um and so I think that. The council should decide if they're interested in appointing a resident, if there is a process that you would go through that. I I believe the city has done that in the past for other committees that we have residents on and not council members, um. So that would be my hesitation to do this tonight, because it was not something that was included in the staff report. I mean, it really was talking about reassigning council members, so that that would be my initial concern.
Okay, and 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 like the the city attorney mentioned, I think as a council, we should discuss. Uh, I I did not know that this changed, I will say when I was originally on on um S V C E, the the um. They discussed very with a lot of spirit about who could be an alternate and um. I think they finally agreed to let a staff member from the city be an alternate. Um, so I don't know when they actually made this this decision to allow a community member to be an alternate, but um. There was, it was, it was. Most people had stressed that they really wanted to see electeds on the board, but you're saying that that's not the case anymore.
Well, just just a second, it was the case that the primary representative must be an elected official. And then if you're. Your alternate can be either A, another elected, B, a staff member, or C, a member of the community. And George Tyson, who's the chair of chair of S V C E. He was the one that said to me, hey, you don't have to be. Uh, a member.
Oh, no, no, I know that.
Because because prior to him being on the board, they they had their alternate attending, who was who was just a member of the community.
Yeah, I I know who you're talking about too. attends most meetings anyway. Um, yes.
I'm 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 a novice, but I love the idea of having people from the community be alternates. As long as we have a process and follow that process consistently. I don't I don't know, is that that addresses the issue for Clean Energy tomorrow, but I I think it's a terrific idea and that's kind of. That's that's great engagement, that's great, you know, it's kind of a, you know, minor league system for future leadership for the. For the city, so I I I think that's generally very a a very good idea, it's just. We just have to have a process, we have to post it and follow the rules so that everybody knows and then go from there.
Okay, pass over Shannon, have any thoughts?
Uh, I I I am leaning towards that there should be a formal process that might include. If it's someone from the community, they come to the next council meeting to report on any meetings they attend, you know, that kind of thing, um. I would be uncomfortable just making a snap decision here tonight to appoint somebody without having come up with a process.
Okay, so it sounds like. Everybody's in favor of opening the opportunity to the community, but that we should have a formal process. And we should agendize it and we should make it a. A um make make an announcement through our email blast system and try to get applicants to come in, and so then. I I think if we're going to do that, then even though council member Alan said that he would like to take on that position. That we would say that he would not take on that position and we're definitely going to give this position to a member of the community.
Well, that's my next question, how do we decide?
So again, tonight on the agenda is not how we're going to fill that position, so what what we. Could do is bring it back at a future meeting where you would talk about what's the interview process, what all of those details, um. And then having that interview process, we realize it's gonna take a little bit of time.
Right.
So I don't know, typically, council member McCarthy doesn't miss a meeting, um that that's gonna be an issue, other than. This conference being um a conflict, but otherwise, I don't think it's typically an issue, but you could appoint. Council or Vice Mayor Alan in the interim, it would only be through December or January, appointments are done in um January. Or he could serve until such time as the resident is appointed, so you would wouldn't have that gap.
Interesting idea, um. What do you think about that, Brian?
Doesn't solve your problem.
Right.
It does, yeah, my problem.
I don't think we're gonna get the problem solved by giving them an alternate for tomorrow, because we don't even know. If we appointed council member Alan, if he could attend tomorrow.
Right, I I. I think that the person that we appoint has to be completely aligned with the mission. Of Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And um. So. And I will would gen- I would have attended remotely tomorrow, but it doesn't solve the problem. Right, with the quorum, so um. So I I think that that what we should do then is. And my son says, Dad, don't overthink it, you know, sometimes, but. If we need to have appoint someone as an alternative, we want to get them from the community, I don't think we we need to take. Turn it into a three sixty day exercise, no, we can't, I think we could do it like it at a fairly quickly. We should be more nimble than that, having said that, you know, you do an email blast.
Well, I mean, I think we're gonna be pretty nimble, we just can't be one day nimble, yeah.
And some few, some period of, some period of reasonable time for people to respond, and the alternates. Are e- could be either someone from the community or member of the council, right?
Or staff.
Or or staff, but.
But but also, let me just say something real fast. If we're going to redo all of the board appointments. In December. January. Um, and does Silicon Valley Clean Energy meet in December usually, I don't guess, okay, so that would. Is that, so let's let's say that we got this all on board and we got somebody picked at the next meeting. Or even by the first meeting in November. They would then serve the November meeting, the December meeting, then we go through the whole deployment process again. And, oh, sorry, uh and and I guess, you know, again, that's something I think the council may want to discuss, I mean, if somebody on the council would like that position. Because it is a, it is a very important um part of our community, Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Um, so I would I would hate to put somebody through the interview process just to have them. Get pushed aside in January. So that's just something else to think about, I'm just kind of throwing a lot of stuff out there, but so I think um.
So maybe we just fill the gaps between now and the end of the year and then create a process that starts. In January with the new apartments.
But I think we also need to make the decision, do we want to make the alternate position for Silicon Valley Clean Energy of a a a community position? Because I don't think. Which which we can't do that tonight, but I think that should be on the next agenda item, because. You you don't want to have people competing against sitting council members, I don't think that.
Right.
That has a good offer tonight, yes. When when we get there, but you know what, we're talking about the future, so. We should probably move on. I think we should.
From my direct purpose, um will we be assigning um Vice Mayor Allen as the alternate for this?
Yes, he's volunteered to do so, so uh I will nominate Councilmember Allen. To fill Councilmembers a lot in position as alternate for this Silicon Valley Clean Energy. So I need a second on that.
And if I could just recognize that Mister McCarthy came down here today to, you know, to show that he's interested in being involved in Monte Sereno. And I just want to tell you, I appreciate that you're willing to be involved, and that you have something you're very interested in, and I'm sorry that. You know, we have all this going on, um and hopefully you understand why we're talking about procedure and all that, but but really. Very happy to see somebody who's interested in being involved in the community, so don't let this deter you, please.
Yeah. Thank you so much for. Okay. So I'll need a second if we're going to appoint Councilmember Allen.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? All abstaining?
All abstain.
Okay, so.
Then you have the other positions as well.
And for the other positions, um. Oh. That would be Santa Clara County Cities Association Legislative Action Committee, City Selection. And Savaka Alternate, and I would I would nominate Councilmember uh Torren. For those positions, so I have a second.
All seconded.
Thank you, all in favor, all right? Excellent, and for Silicon Va- I'm sorry, Santa Clara County Library. I would like to nominate Councilmember Shannon to be the alternate member there, so and um we have a second, all in favor? And um, sorry, you probably won't get to go to many meetings, but.
It's all right, I mean, I know you're very involved in it, but. In that JPA, so.
Yeah, and um, you know, definitely uh. I'll let you know, because there's some other functions that that you can attend to. So, okay, so are we all done with item number eight? I think we are. Okay, so that takes us to committee and commission reports. And I think I started on my right, we'll start on my left this time with Councilmember McCarthy.
BTA Policy Advisory Committee, as I said a few minutes ago, uh it should have been this Thursday, but because of the Cities Association meeting. In uh Long Beach, that's canceled. Um, West Valley Stormwater Authority, we're in an off cycle right now, so that yeah, both them and Solid Waste. Uh, a meeting uh in a couple of weeks, or sorry, in a in a month. Um, SVCE is meeting. This week.
Yep.
Uh, and I have faith, I'm cheering for you. Uh, Santa Clara County Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission, uh we've got a meeting in October. And uh I will be bringing an item to that commission. Hopefully we'll have a quorum, but that commission has failed to have a quorum, something like. Five times out of six times last year, which is unfortunate. Um, but to deal with um uh getting household hazardous waste. Out of the uh hillsides. Um, and then the other thing that I'm gonna report on is. The Cities Association Meeting, of which I'm a voting delegate. Uh, as nominated by the city of Monte Sereno. And I am just so surprised that there's not gonna be anything to vote on. There's there's nothing.
They didn't get any.
They they, there's no issues, and um and I intend on going there and saying, you know, hey. We're in the state of California, there's all kinds of.
Is that the one?
No, 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 this is uh League of California City. I I think it says Cities Association.
Yeah, maybe. No, I said California cities.
Yeah.
Like, this has, like, it's. It's a big annual conference, it's three days, and uh for example. Saratoga, they're sending all five council members there. And uh which brings Tina Wally, who's on SVCE, she's not gonna be in the in the county, so she does not party for a quorum. Um, and there's numerous other people, so that's what's causing.
I guess I still don't understand this, why in the county?
Oh, that. In the jurisdiction, so for them, it would be the county um in order to have a meeting, some can appear remotely, but you have to have a physical.
So that's the same for us too then, right, we have to have, okay. I, for s- some reason, I thought we had had two people here, one person out of the county and.
COVID, you did.
Okay.
But otherwise, you have to have a quorum, basically presidency.
Oh, that's not gonna say that.
No, let's not do that, okay. So that that's my report.
Alrighty.
Ken, you want to take a practice run in anything? That's that's your practice right there, so nothing to report. Councilmember Shannon?
Um, I actually have nothing to report either, um West Valley Sanitation District meets tomorrow night. And um Santa Clara Valley Water Commission meets, actually not again until right after our next meeting, so nothing to report right now.
Great, and um I'm kind of in the same, but that's why I don't say nothing to report. Uh, we did have a mayor managers meeting, which we didn't actually have any guest speakers, so we kind of. Talked about subjects that were important to us, and I think probably. What I I think what got the most um traction was fire again. Especially in Saratoga, a lot of people were very curious about the fact that, I don't know if a lot of people know this, but. Part of Saratoga is actually covered by a. A fire district, is that, it's a separate fire district.
Yes.
That they actually contract separately for, so part of Saratoga is county fire, and then they had this one district up in the in the hills that. Uh, the residents pay parcel tax to keep their own fire district there, so but there was a lot of questions about how that worked and. Think the wheels were were turning, and then, of course, we were all talking about the uh the county. Uh shortfall that they're trying to make up with their tax measure, I mean. I I figured out like only five emails this week so far about coming to some seminar or another talking about. About that, but other than that, nothing to report. Unless you want to hear about the county shortfall again. Alright, so that brings us to Councilmember comments, and at this time, this is where members can basically. Make a an announcement, speak something that's on their mind, so we'll start with Councilmember Shannon this time, she'll show you how it's done.
Oh, I don't have any comments. Sorry to let you down, yeah, that's how it's.
Then we'll switch over to Councilmember McCarthy.
I guess, first of all, um I know Vice Mayor Allen is not here tonight. Um, and I hope that everything's going well with him.
Yes.
And uh and Mary, um. I guess uh the other thing is that uh we are making progress on our. Pilot implementation, so that's burning up a fair amount of effort and and. Uh, from the ad hoc committee perspective, it's really good to be working with uh Lisa. Because if I'm away, she can kind of step up, and then if she's away, I can kind of step up. So, and I think that she's got some exciting things happening next week.
Yes, I already made an announcement about that earlier.
Okay.
Yeah. We're very excited for her, I'm sure she's like.
Over the moon.
Yes. Okay, um.
And I think. It's great to see. Councilmember Torren sitting at the base.
And that's exactly what I was gonna say, it's great, it's great to be here at my first meeting, and I really, I really want to say I'm honored, and it's. It's a real privilege to be here, and I want to thank each and every one of you for. Your welcome and your help and your assistance and crazy emails that I sent. And I agree, a beautiful new camera, um so, no, I just really, I just really appreciate everything and. I'm honored and uh hope hope uh look forward to great things, so thank you.
Thank you to Melissa for letting you volunteer.
Thank you too.
Hi, Melissa.
So usually I I go in the house, I say, I'm sorry, because I forgot to do something. That's a different, different subject.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize, I had my opportunity to formally welcome you to the council, and I bypassed it, and said I have no comments, so welcome to the council.
Yeah, so we're glad to have you on board, and I have served with Ken, I have the uh. At KCAT for over five years now, and and um it's it's great to have your talents. Okay, uh I don't have any comments either, I I mentioned them during the announcements, but if anybody is. Came on late, uh the Dolly Parton Imaginarium is now in full swing, take a look at the Santa Clara County uh Library. Homepage, and they've got a nice big picture of Dolly Parton with kids. And they're all reading books and having a great time, and it's a good chance where you can get a free book and have it mailed to your child. It it, I I just remember growing up, it was always a special treat to get something in the mail. You know, we we buy something from the back of the cereal box or something, now. You know, thirteen packages come to my house every day, my kids are like, just taking them, and literally they're in a pile next to the front door, they don't care about receiving. A package anymore, but maybe little kids are still excited about getting something every every month. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to the city manager report.
Thank you, um just one quick reminder um to the council members that the Los Gatos Monte Sereno Police Foundation. Award Lunch is next Thursday, October sixteenth, and there is still time to sign up, if any council member would like to attend, please let boys be. Or we know, and we can get you signed up for that.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting, and thank you all very much for all of your hard work.
Thank you.